All right. Hey. I'd like to call to order the work session Monday, May 19, 2025, to listen to community enhancement grant applications at 6:00. Got a little thing here to read. Appreciate all you coming tonight. Today, we are going to be hearing from applicants of the 2025 Community Enhancement. For over 20 years, this program has been providing support to nonprofit organizations doing great work in Scappus that the city desires to support. This year, 16 applicants, applications were submitted this year, and all were invited to present to us tonight. Each applicant will have five minutes to present, and then we'll have two minutes to ask questions after that. These time limits do not roll over as we do, as we respectfully need to keep the evening rolling. We'll get as much done as we can in this first hour, then we will take a quick break and start our regular meeting, and then get back in to finish, pick up where we left off. Our job tonight is to not deliberate the merits of the applications, but to listen, ask, and learn. At the June 2nd council meeting, we will have the opportunity to deliberate and ultimately allocate these funds. Before we begin, does any counselor have a financial or familial conflict of interest for any of these grants? Thank you. Does any counselor have any questions for staff before we begin? I think you kind of have a listing from last year and the grant awards to kind of give you an idea. And we will talk with NJ about how we're going to go over this and who's eligible and qualifies at a later time. But since we are ready to go, we do have a list of 16. I'm going to start with Spring Lake Community Application, and then next up will be Amani Center and then Casa for Children. And we do have to have you speak really well into the microphone so it can be recorded online. We do have copies of all your applications in here, too, and we will... So whatever you had on your application, we will see in our package.
All right, thank you. My name is Maurice Cassidy. I'm from Spring Lake Community Incorporated. We're a 55 and older community over in the southeast section of Scappus. The handout I just provided to you, I can direct your attention to that. In the upper-left corner is a photograph of Spring Lake from the air. On the very left of that photograph, a large white area is Bi-Mart, and the large white area above that is Rose Valley. We have these two ponds that the city has an easement through in order to receive all the stormwater pouring through 90 acres of Scappus. Thirty-two of those acres are ourselves. Down below, I have a pie chart there just showing you that our age brackets break down. Basically, about 20% of our members are in their 60s, about a third are in their 70s, a third in the 80s, and then we hit the 90s. We have 100, and even a few 50-year-olds have snuck in. In the upper-right, the photograph that I have is a blow-up of the south pond. And it's a little difficult to see, but I direct your attention to a red line coming from a little bit below the north pond that follows down along a path and then terminates on a small promontory there. That's what I'm referring to as the point. What we'd like to do is enable more of our members and their visitors to get down to this promontory and be able to see more of the pond, more of the wildlife and other features that we have. We currently have a poured gravel pathway around the pond. It's .3 miles to circumvent the entire pond. And what we're looking at is running 100 yards of what's called Mobi Mat. If you'd flip over to the other side, Mobi is short for mobility. You may have seen some of these mats actually in place down in such places as Lincoln City, Seaside, or Portland City Parks. The photo in the upper-left shows someone pushing someone across one of these mats in order to cross over the beaches. I've done this down at Lincoln City. It works very well and provides access that would otherwise not be available to people that are relying upon assistive devices such as wheelchairs, scooters, and things like that. You can see on that photograph, there's a white stripe down through the center of it. The mats that we're looking at are five feet wide, and that strip down the middle is just to help people that are seeing impaired. The second photograph there on the left shows a view going south towards the promontory. You can see the gravel. We do have a small viewing station there. This is all taken right next to a road. Some number of our members do not have fantastic eyesight and can only see about halfway down the pond. If we could get them further down to where that lower-left picture is, there is room there for people to have their wheelchairs, have their families. You can't quite see it in this photograph. There is a bench already in place in the foreground of the plants that are there. On the right-hand side, at the bottom, is just a photograph now looking north from the bottom of that promontory. You can see we have one of our fountains running there. And then above that, a photograph showing the gravel pathway heading up towards the road, which is where people would be parking their cars. With the addition of this to our park, we would be able to have people get out there that need help with the wheelchairs, whether motorized or not, scooters, walkers, and things like that. The gravel pathway has trapped a number of people that have started around, and people have to assist them getting back out of there. It's not conducive to people in assistive devices to get around. The total cost for the Mobi mats...
I didn't say that is five, so please, please ramp it up. Thank you.
Would be $12,500. We're asking for $5,000. We have two other grants that we're looking at that we hope would close this, as well as members of the community have been contributing to a fund that's been set aside by the thoughtful neighbors team. Any questions?
No, I appreciate that, Maurice. I will be the first one, and my timer's not working. I'll get a one-minute heads-up or something, and I'll just do something to let you guys know. I don't want to interrupt, but I will give you time to wind down. Appreciate it.
We're going to housekeeping items. So it said here that May 15th was your meeting, so I'm assuming that your board did approve this application?
The board approves of this.
Okay, and then can we get a signed version of this? It looks like this one is not signed, so we have it on file.
I can bring that by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I would stay to hear other presentations, but I have a nurse sitting with my wife right now. I need to go. And thank you for my...
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Amani Center. Good. And then Casa is up next, and in the hole.
My name is Beth Toledo with the Amani Center. I don't know if everybody knows who we are, but we are Columbia County's Child Abuse Assessment Center. We provide forensic interviews and medical assessments and evaluations for children in Columbia County who are possible victims of abuse, neglect, child endangerment, maltreatment, and witness to violence. We are here to request general operating for the Amani Center's services to the community. I have the same paper you have in front of me, but I'll just point out a couple of things that maybe matter.
Just... It's not five minutes yet.
So our numbers, we served 248 students, children last year. Thirty-six of those were from Scappus, which represents about 14 and 1/2% of the kids that we have seen across the county. Our operating budget this year was 2.1 million. We're actually coming in under that just because we have lower staff than we had anticipated. But we are asking for definitely less than 1% of our operating costs from the city. And you would be supporting child abuse forensic assessments, as well as an expansion of our programs. We've just opened a mental health program last month to be able to see kids who have come to our agency and have been triaged into a very acute type of mental health assistance. And then we help get them into longer care term after they've had specialized treatment through us. Also, with some of the extenuating circumstances in our community around school district issues, we have actually launched a prevention program as well, and we'll be entering into the schools to teach more about prevention to students, family members, and staff. So one of the reasons that we fit the CEP guidelines with Scappus is we are keeping your officers close to home. If we did not exist in Columbia County, your officers would have to take kids to Portland and go through a process that's less responsive and a longer time, and it would be taking your officers off the road to be able to protect your citizens here in Scappus. We have a lot of participation with your officers. Chief Llewellyn, Sergeant Larson, Officer Gainer, as well as Officer Johnson, who tends to be the onsite detective for our multidisciplinary team and is onsite during most of the interventions or most of the interviews, investigations that happen in our agency. And I think that's all I have.
Great. Questions?
Beth, are any of your funding sources at risk at this point?
Yes. So we have a 40% reduction in Victim of Crime Act funding from the federal government. That was already happening before this new administration. We anticipate that we might be impacted by Medicare and Medicaid cuts. 70%, at the very least, of our kids are on OHP. And that's probably our best source of income when we're talking about insurance. And if Oregon as a sanctuary state stops receiving funding from the DOJ federally, then we'll be hit pretty hard with a lack of medical reimbursement.
And so that's just an unknown impact?
It's an unknown at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Casa for Children, and then next up will be Columbia County Hub and the whole Community Action. For Casa for Children. Okay, Columbia County Hub and Community Action.
NJ, did Casa say they were going to show or give any indication?
I didn't get RSVPs from most organizations. I didn't request them, but I did invite all of them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You just want to play your phone timer?
Hi, my name is Gretchen Witt, and I am a board member for Columbia County HUB, acronym for that, CHUB. And I am here today to request financial assistance for our campership program. This is a program we've been involved with for four years now, I believe. And what we do is we take low-income kids or underserved kids, underprivileged kids, and we get them sponsorship to go to a 27-day camp somewhere in the United States. And this is all through a Thousand Summers Campership Program. They have a total of 12 camps throughout the United States. And the campers we have seen come through our program in the past, some of them have gone to Woodby Island up there for 27 days. I have a camper that I've worked with. This will be my fourth year with him, and he goes to Chile, Colorado. So with this program, it is on a sliding scale. So that does mean that families or CHUB will have to finance the uncovered expense. Total cost per camper to attend this without any funding for the full 27 days is $7,045. So obviously, for most people in our community, that's not affordable. But with working with this program and the sliding scale, we have been able to get their camp tuition, if you will, fully covered. And so that just leaves the outlying expenses. The major one is travel. Obviously, not so much for the one that goes to Woodby Island. But there is airfare for my guy who goes to Colorado. Some of the other things that come out of our budget that we help the families with, there's a part of the program called the Capstone Program. And in that program, the camper has to do a community project. One of the campers, we had built a bench with poding squares on the side of it. And so we bought all the supplies for them to complete that. Another camper for their Capstone project did a fundraiser for the Columbia Humane Society. Each camper needs to be equipped with certain things for their stay. And that's an average of about $250 per kid, and that is an expense that we tend to pick up if they don't have... You'd be surprised how many kids don't even have a sleeping bag. Some training involved. Each of the campers have specific things, excursions that they'll plan out ahead. They're allowed to have so many excursions. If they want to do some extra one, they can ask us and see if we have funds available for that. So there's a lot of uncovered expenses that low-income families definitely could not afford. But this is our fourth year doing it, and I'm going to speak directly about my camper because I've had the same one. I've had a couple, but he's my guy. So he started off with a camper, and the next year, he did the Capstone program. This year, he's in the Compass Program. And the basics of the Compass Program is to enhance social, emotional learning. It's like your basic first step to becoming a counselor, because that is his end goal, is to become a counselor. And having worked with my camper for so many years, I've gotten to know him on a little personal level. He is a totally different guy at camp than he is at school. At school, he's very quiet, reserved, but he's a social butterfly when he goes to camp. They recently updated their system, so parents and mentors can go in and see pictures, get weekly updates, emails, things like that. The campers... Thank you. I need that. I ran over last year. So the kids are from ages 10 to 17, and they can go past that as leaderships if they want, but they have to go, you know, work up the scale there. So the two pieces of paper I gave you, one is just the breakdown of some of the costs that are associated with that. And then I gave you a blurb about the campership program, just because that's one that all the kids go through.
Perfect. Question? Oh, thank you very much.
Quick question. The 12 camps that they go to, are those all nonprofit camps?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Oh, I wish I could go. Each camp focuses on a certain thing. Like, my guy likes the horseback riding, and that's why he chooses the one in Colorado, water sports, Woodby Island. So each kind of have a different theme.
Thank you.
I'm going to also leave this for you. This goes more deep into the other, the Capstone and the leadership programs. I'll leave that over here so you guys...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Community Action Team, followed by Grace Lutheran Children's Center. Handing out a little brochure on Community Action Team. I don't know how many of you are actually...
So I'm Dan Brown, the Executive Director of Community Action Team. We're a community action program that serves actually three counties, Columbia, Clatsop, and Tilliwah. Our offices are in St. Helens. If you look through the brochure, we actually have three main departments of programs, areas. We have our Child and Family Development, so we have Head Start, Health Families, and Parenting Ed. And our Child and Family Development Programs, and we have our Community Investment Programs, which is anything that does with sticks and bricks. We own Victorian Olive Court here in Scappus, as well as a few other housing developments. We do single-family home rehab and weatherization, anything that has to do with trying to keep people in their homes. Then the third area that I want to focus on tonight is our community investment. That's where typically our more programs that might be team or social service programs. We house the County Veteran Service Officer there, and we house our assistance programs. We house anything to do with rental assistance and homeless programs, et cetera. And then we have our senior programs. Some years back, the Scappus Senior Center had opted not to continue to contract with us for the delivery of meals, home-delivered meals. And there were a number of reasons behind that. But immediately after that, St. Helens Senior Center took on that responsibility of delivering those meals. For years, I was told that their top-notch program funded that pretty much exclusively. Come to find out, it didn't, and eventually, they kind of ran out of money to continue doing that. They ended up laying off staff. Kat immediately took over the delivery of those meals and the preparation of those meals. And the reason is, is that if we don't deliver meals in the county, we stand to lose all of our funding for our senior programs. Keeping people fed is the number-one priority of the funding, so that's what we made our priority. So that's what we're trying to do at this point. We took over those meals. Our current funding is just plain insufficient for what we're trying to do. We haven't seen an increase in federal or state funding for the senior programs for many, many years. If you've been at the grocery store in the last year, you might have noticed that prices are starting to go up. So we're having more and more issues just trying to make ends meet with keeping the program alive. St. Helens is hoping to eventually take the program back over, but one of the things they keep asking me is, why is Scappus contributing anything to the meal program when they're serving all the meals in Scappus area? So that's what I'm here for, is to make a request for a little bit of assistance towards that meal program. Happy to answer any questions for you.
I have one quick one. So if you have our Scappus Senior Center in the room, have we contacted them in the last year or two, and is there any interest in looking for them as well?
It's been a while since we've talked to them, to be honest. Every year, we do publish an RFP for meal program. They've opted not to apply for that service.
And so I'm kind of reading through this. Most of the... You do do a lot of meals within city limits of Scappus? More questions? Appreciate it.
Well, I was going to say, I expected more questions.
I delivered a little bit for you guys, so I understand.
Great.
Thanks, Dan.
Program is? Okay, Grace Lutheran Children's Center, followed by Northwest Regional Education Service District.
My name is Gail Walker. I'm the Board Chair for Grace Christian Children's Center. We're seeking grant funds to help us furnish two new classrooms. We're building a 24-by-52-foot new building to expand our preschool program. And when we move out of the existing preschool room, we'll free up 15 new full-time daycare space. We started with a day preschool in our church fellowship hall, and then in 2008, we built a wing on our church building and opened the Grace Christian Children's Center. We added a full-time daycare center.
One question. Can we have you more closer to the mic because they're having trouble?
I'm talking too fast.
No, they're just troubleless, hearing online. These mics are...
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Perfect.
Okay. So when we opened the new building, we added a full-time daycare, 6:30 in the morning till 6:00 at night, five days a week, and an age-specific preschool for three- and four-year-olds. Our preschool program is in one classroom, so we have to have our four-year-olds morning and afternoon, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and Tuesday and Thursday, we have three-year-olds. So with our new building, we'll have a four-year-old classroom and a three-year-old classroom so we can run morning and afternoon classes. Kindergarten is a full day now, so the four-year-olds especially, the parents would like them to have a little more time at preschool. Our preschool program runs concurrent with the Scappus School District. So when the schools are out, the preschool is out, so that building will be open to daycare use. And we have a really large after-school program. They're bused right to our center. And currently, they go into the fellowship hall and a room downstairs in the church, plus the daycare center. We get the new building. The afternoon preschool will be out when the buses deliver the kids. We have four to five buses every day. Forty-some kids come, and they'll go right into the new building. And they will still utilize the building downstairs at the church, but they will no longer have to be in the fellowship hall. A Christmas break, all summer, and spring break, it doesn't the best thing to have the fellowship hall used all day long, all during the week. Currently, we have 117 kids enrolled in our program. We have 24 full-time state children. We are certified, state-certified. We have our Lutheran. We have a Lutheran Church Accreditation School. We have a Spark rating of two, which has to do with the ERDC, the state kids program. We would like to not have to utilize the main room in the church, which is one of the things the new builders have promised to do. For one of the few daycares that provide food, we provide breakfast, lunch, morning snack, afternoon snack, and what we call evening snack for the rabbinist kids that get off the school bus. They need a snack when they get off the bus, so we provide snack for them. It's all FDA-approved, real strict guidelines, what we can serve and what we can't serve, and we follow that absolutely. We have a great staff. Two of our gals have been there for 17 years since we opened the new building. Our current preschool teacher attended Grace as a four-year-old preschool student, so that's a full-circle deal right there. Any higher age from the school district, they can start when they're 14 and 15. We have to wait till they're 15. We just hired one now for the summer. We currently have 14 full-time employees, two part-time employees. Excuse me. In the summertime, when we have all the kids are there, all the school-age kids, we'll have 17 full-time employees. So I just appreciate the chance for this. I included a list of one of the orders for the things we need to furnish the buildings. That by no means all that we need for those two rooms. They're great. They each have their own separate bathroom. Each has a refrigerator, and one has a dishwasher to sterilize the things. There won't be a kitchen in that building. It's all ADA. It's going to be really, really nice. So I appreciate you hearing me.
Thank you. My sons went through the program. One question. Is the daycare a nonprofit?
Yes.
501(c)(3). Great.
I have a question. So if you have a family that is maybe not able to meet the tuition requirements, do you have a sliding scale or a grant program at all for those families?
We used to do scholarships. We don't do that anymore. The state program, they apply through the state, and then the state does all the paper. We don't have any way to check finances. It just got where we couldn't be fair about that because we can't really check what they're telling. So, yeah, they go through the state and then they get the family. We have 24 kids right now in the state.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. Gail, the demand obviously probably exceeds supply.
Exactly.
Okay, so how do you filter out your applicants? So the demand for daycare is greater than the supply.
Right.
So how do you filter out who gets in?
Well, people don't work Monday through Friday anymore, so right now, we have some... So right now, we have some days of week that are full, and other days that we still have room. So we just have to, when we get the 15 new spaces, that should eliminate a lot of that. It's by who applies and what we can fill for what they want.
So it's kind of first come, first served?
Pretty much, yeah.
So if you're going to have.
We have a waiting list.
Apply now, Joel.
Yeah. We have a waiting list, and we try to accommodate as much as we can with the waiting list. And so we keep in touch that way.
Definitely do need more daycare support and daycares and early learning, for sure. Thank you. Northwest Regional ESD, and then Sandy School of Horsemanship up next. Susan's, welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Jamie Brady, and I'm a professional learning coach for Northwest Regional ESD. If you're not familiar with the Educational Service District in our region, primarily, we provide early learning services and special education supports for 20 school districts in Northwest Oregon. And in the last three years, we have developed a career and technical education and career and college readiness program for our regions. Currently, Columbia County actually has the least amount of services and supports related to career and technical education and STEAM learning and work-based learning in our, across our four counties. And so we received a grant from Oregon Department of Education last year that has funded this program that I'm going to speak about for the last two years. So we're upcoming, and we're coming up on the second iteration of this program targeting eighth-grade students at PCC OMAC. And so I work closely with Portland Community College OMAC campus in partnership to provide opportunities for students, for exposure and learning around science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, as well as career and technical education. So our grant from Oregon Department of Ed is expiring in September, and we are hoping to continue this program. And the flyer that I handed out just provides a little bit of an overview and context for what that program offers to students. So this has been a two-day program, a two-day camp in the summer for eighth-grade students. Last year, we served 30 students from across Columbia County. We provided all of the things needed for students to attend this camp, from Clatsburg, Iverdonia, Scappus, Rainier, and including transportation. And we're hoping to continue offering this camp. And we have been working with PCC OMAC to think about expanding it. We've had a waitlist the last, well, last year in 2024, and we anticipate a waitlist again this summer. And we would love to offer a cohort for maybe Scappus eighth-grade students specifically, in addition to, if we have other sources of funding, providing the same services to other Columbia County students in a separate cohort. In my application, I noted that the cost for the program is more than $5,000. Northwest Regional and PCC OMAC are both committed to providing the staff costs that are required to fund this program, but all of the barrier minimization needed. So transportation, food, and equipment, technology that the students are using in the Maker Space Fab Lab there, as well as different other activities, including coding and bringing in instructional coaches for coding and game design and that kind of thing. All of those costs would be needed to provide this camp for students. We are hoping to offer more of these types of things to different grade levels across the county, and in particular, Scappus, since PCC OMAC is located in Scappus. And we believe this addresses the council's priorities with lifelong learning and connected community. I'm headed over to the Scappus Middle School tomorrow to recruit a little bit for Scappus eighth graders to register for this camp this summer. So we're excited to be able to offer this again. And like I said, we would hope to continue it for next June. And we've thought about different ways to making it work for student schedules as well. Could be a Saturday, could be, again, a two-day thing in the summer, or maybe eventually expanding it to three or four days as well. So we're excited about the future of what we can do with these partnerships. And again, thanks for the opportunity. I know if you have any questions.
Well, I just have verification, just because you mentioned the cohort for Scappus.
Yeah.
Here you mentioned, if you do not receive the funding, you may not expand the program to offer a separate cohort for Scappus.
Correct. So for the last, so for 2024 was our first cohort, and it was open to the entire county. And so we're doing the same thing this year. And like I mentioned, we have had waitlists last year and anticipate one again. And so with this community enhancement program opportunity, we saw it as an opportunity to potentially offer a cohort just for Scappus students. And if we had additional funding or other funding sources for the county, we could continue opening it up to the rest of the county, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy School of Horsemanship, and then Scappus Community Club.
Hello. Thank you for hearing our information and considering our proposal today. My name is Cassie. I'm Cassie Uwer. I am the founder and Executive Director of Sandy School of Horsemanship. We are a nonprofit organization located in Warren, founded in 2010 with the mission to provide accessible equine programs focusing on life skill development for all individuals, including at-risk youth and people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We offer four programs to serve the community: therapeutic riding, youth leadership, integrated horsemanship, and equine-assisted mental health. The program that we are asking for support with today, and that I will be speaking about today, is equine-assisted mental health. Last year, you guys graciously funded over $3,000 for the construction of our new mental health wing and expanded arena. That is nearly completed and will be by the time we bring on our new providers this fall to actually expand the programming. So thank you for that. This year, we are asking for the funding necessary to assist with training and supervising three mental health providers, who will be beginning our program in September. These providers are master-level interns in their final year in the counseling department at Portland State University, all focusing in three different areas, all of which are areas that are greatly needed in the community. So one is seeing young children and families. One will be specializing in mental health needs for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And one will be providing services just for individuals and for entire families. So when you're providing a mental health service that is experience-based, there is an additional level of training necessary. So these providers have received training just on working with the clients, but not on integrating horses into the therapeutic process. So we plan to just train for about 80 hours with each of these providers before they begin seeing clients. Many of those hours will need to be supervised by our licensed professional counselor, a minimum of four hours per week per provider, which is included in our grant request. These hours that are necessary for these providers to begin seeing clients are not billable. So that specific time of training the providers is what we are asking for. Once our providers start between, start seeing clients, between 30% and 50% of their hours will be billable to insurance, which will make the program financially sustainable. And at the end of their 10-month internship, we plan to bring, as long as they work out and they're providing a much-needed service, and it's working with the barn, we plan to offer positions to all three of these providers, which would greatly enhance a few things. One, economic viability in Columbia County. Two, job opportunities. Three, mental health opportunities for our community. And the fourth thing I want to highlight, I mentioned last year, but that was a very long time ago. Columbia County is still in extreme shortage of mental health providers. So as in compared to Multnomah County, Columbia County has one provider for every 2,083 residents, whereas Multnomah County has one for every 313 residents. So most of the providers that are available to see clients are through CCMH, as many providers don't take OHP. Our providers that we're bringing on this fall will exclusively be seeing clients on the Oregon Health Plan. So again, that's providing not just a much-needed service, but a much-needed service for a community that is historically underserved and high need. I think the last thing I want to mention is that over half of our clients live in Scappus boundaries. So even though we are located in Warren, our student population primarily comes from within the Scappus city boundaries.
What I was going to make. Thank you. Questions? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scappus Community Club, followed by Scappus Community Connection.
Good evening, everyone. Name is Bill Blank. The Scappus Community Club, and I'm also the person who is basically in charge of the Saturday Farmer's Market that you see outside this building quite often, every Saturday. We started in May the 3rd and will continue through the end of our season, which is in September the 27th. And I would try to keep this brief because I know your time is important. But I'd like to thank the City Council for their consideration for our request for our project. We have, we're trying to fund live music in the Scappus Community Club Farmer's Market during 2025. Music, which is a special addition to the market, is very popular with both the market and with the public that goes there, and our vendors. I'd like to thank you for your passit forth. This request will continue the return of music to the Farmer's Market after a period of time when it was missing, which was due to the pandemic law that allows to do that. The state had shut it down. We hope to continue the momentum for the popular event, and music is a vital, the important part of the community, and the community connector brings an abundance of neighbors and others together to enjoy the Farmer's Market and adds to the local economy. The attraction of music also, as mentioned, brings the community together, and it also overflows into other local events. So we have Heritage Park, City Library, the Michael Curry Children's Fountain, the Skate Park, the Historical Society, the Watch House. All those are nearby businesses that benefit from the crowds that we draw on Saturday as well. Our request, if granted, would help us supplement the expense for paying largely local talented performers during the months of the summer through September. Allows us to extend the number of days we can offer music. With this funding, we can increase both the number of musicians, dance groups, and other music-related activities at Farmer's Market. So I just want to thank you for your considerations, and if you have any questions, I'm ready to answer.
Thank you. How is, do you have a good amount of vendors so far this year?
Yes, we've had an excellent turnout of vendors. Over 35 the first day, and I think we had 32. And then this last week, a little less because of the weather, but we still had over 20 vendors.
Great.
The turnout.
Appreciate it.
That is. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Hey. Scappus Community Connection, followed by Scappus Health, the parent organization.
I am Catherine Heugel, and I represent the Scappus Community Connection. We, first of all, I appreciate you being able to listen to me for a few minutes tonight. We are a quite new 501(c)(3), recently started. A number of our members have watched the community for many years. And we would like to and plan on through communication, volunteering, and community projects to do things that would help in the Scappus community. The first one we are working on right now is the Heritage Park Grateley, for the most part, that is, holiday decorations. I have added a few pictures to help explain, but I'll go through a couple of those as we move on. In starting this new organization, we are wanting, like I said, to enhance mostly Heritage Park. But that does definitely lead toward the north and the south Welcome Islands and different areas of city area. Already, in the last six months, I've listed what we've already done. Basically assisting the library and nearby gazebo to get permanent interactive holiday lighting. And it is up. I don't know if you've seen it yet, but it is beautiful. It's permanent lighting. It comes with a maintenance plan equaling approximately 17 years. If anything happens, they'll come out and fix it. It is interactive in that the lights can change. They are very programmable. So for example, at Christmas, you can have the green and red flashing, and the library and the gazebo would match. And we're also working on trying to get it to also coincide with what our colors, the fountain, has. So that is one thing we have done. And it provides 365 24-hour daylighting when we want to, depending on the holiday. Valentine's could be pink. Who knows? That is basically programmed by the library and Scappus City. And so they're working together on that. We are also increasing all the foundation plantings around the fountain and increasing that light. And also, we are planning on decorating both trees on the north end of the library. So we found a way to get power to both of those trees, have those lit up. We are also coordinating with the Watts House, and should be a huge exhibit. On November 30th, when we do the Heritage Park lights, and they all get turned on, Santa Claus arrives on the fire truck, we give out cookies. It is also going to be the same night when Whoville starts and Watts House opens up. So we're going to have their character running around, competing with Santa Claus, and it should be a very huge event. There'll be a lot of advertising coming in from other towns, folks visiting. And so it's going to be a big night. We are also planning to increase our vendors in the parking lot, which is right out here, to the north of the park. About an hour early, what we would like to do is bring in vendors that can have holiday-type themed things they can sell. So we're actually increasing the hours the people are in the park. And when all the lights come on, it should be a pretty grand situation. We're also planning on getting a Christmas tree, hopefully, in the park. So to bring more community together and really enjoy the park to its fullest. One of the big things we're doing right now is thinking outside the box and looking at really fun, interactive displays. We have for many, many years, 20, 30 years, I don't know, have. displays. We have for many, many years, 20, 30 years, I don't know, have the same displays. We set them up, they're a month, and we take them down. And they are basically the same ones. We were able to get LED lights in about five years ago. But still, we're looking at, we can do a lot better. And our group is wanting to start this by, for example, what I call, the picture on the first page is called the arches. And it will be approximately 30 feet long. It will be strong with twinkling lights so that people, kids can walk through and be completely covered with twinkling lights. I would also like to see some hanging down glow in the dark snowflakes. And so that as there's any breeze, you'll then see those moving too. I think for kids, it'd be really interactive and fun for them. And being on a sidewalk, we're going to put on the north side of the library, on a sidewalk, anybody can get through wheelchair accessible, parents, dogs, I mean, everybody. On the back side of the page, on the back side of the page, you will see the train. It is still with the corded lights. And if you look closely, you'll see that a lot of the wheels, it doesn't work. Where they put lights over the top of the last two, those aren't working at all. So we need to restring the entire thing. And then below are simply some standalone snowflakes. We'd like to get a couple more, since we are working on a snowflake. Questions?
I know we're buying more lighting too, through the city this year. So it should be a really great month of December. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Try to do one more. For Scappus Elementary Parent Organization, followed by Scappus Historical Society.
My name's Megan Grayson. I'm the president of the Scappus Elementary Parent Organization.
And I'm Beth Reiski. I'm the treasurer of SEPO.
Last year, in the spring, the Scappus School District surprised us with a bit of a switch on where kids were going to go to school and which buildings. We historically have been the Grant Watts Parent Organization, just for the K three elementary school here in Scappus. But when they decided to have Warren Elementary be a kinder only, and then now Grant Watts be a first through third, we decided that was a great opportunity to be a little more inclusive of our elementary community and take on pre K at elementary, at Warren Elementary, all the way up through sixth grade at Otto Peterson. So our parent organization now is comprised of three elementary schools, Warren, Grant Watts, and Otto. And then they fly up to the middle school. And I don't know what happened there. But the funding that we provide for over 900 students and the staff at those schools are solely from fundraising events and initiatives that we have. The funds that we acquire go right back to the school. Each teacher gets a stipend and allowance to spend money, not out of their own pocket, for just some basic things they might need in the school year. We fund all the field trips, busing for those, assemblies, experiences that come into the buildings. But I think the ones that we're most proud of are our three major community events. And historically, those three major community events were just for the Grant Watts Elementary community. But now they're for pre K level, all the way to sixth grade, which a lot of people have kids in all three buildings. So it works out, your family's included in anything. And those are the Harvest Festival that kicks off kind of the season of our community events. We have Bingo Night, and we have the Hearts and Arrows Dance. If you're wondering, what does any of this have to do with city council and your goals? I think that it directly relates just to serving the community, harmony of lifelong learning, being engaged with local pride. At these events, we have close to 500 people that attend. So historically Bingo Night was always held in the cafeteria at Grant Watts, and we were to the brim. We did count it, make sure that we were still in compliance. This year, we had to move it over to the Scappus High School. We barely fit with 500 people for Bingo Night from pre K to sixth grade families, which was absolutely amazing. They, they get prizes for every bingo. We provide food at these events. And I think our, our biggest thing to gloat about, if we're going to gloat, is that we make sure that all of these events are free. Prior to us kind of taking over the organization, it was, you know, tickets at the door, a small amount. But we just want people to come as they are and feel like they can enjoy the space and the, the school community and the greater, greater, larger community, and connect with each other without having to worry about funds. I think that we could say in Scappus, there's not always a lot for families to do locally. You know, we can drive into town and then let alone being able to do something for free. So providing these three community events is, is really important to us. That's going to talk a little bit about the shifts in, in finances that everybody's seeing and what we're asking for you from tonight.
Yes. So historically, we have funded these events through our fundraisers. These events are not where we look to make money. So we have things like the Fun Run and the Jogathon at our lower elementary and the Hoopathon. And then we also do our auction in the spring, which we just had in April. Fundraising this fiscal year is down. Economic times, all the, all the factors are there. And so we would love for the city to have a little buy in. These events are well known. They're growing in popularity. I'm not sure how much more we can grow in them. We're running out of larger spaces. But we're just looking for some buy in. We reach out to schools and ask for things like candy donations, where kids are bringing in candy to the door to help out with the Harvest Festival. But there's hundreds of kids coming, and they're there for a couple hours playing these games. So it's just, we go through a lot and we ask for things, but we're, we're very mindful in our asks too, because we know that everyone's always asking in a small community. And so we try not to overwhelm people with our fundraiser asks. And we reach out to local businesses. Grocery outlet is amazing and helps us. Fred Meyer helps us out. We, we do get a lot of sponsorship and help. We're just looking for additional support from the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so we're gonna take a quick break. We'll start up in three minutes. We'll probably get through a couple bookkeeping things within five minutes, and then we'll, we'll pick up where we left off. Scappus Historical Society, you will be first, and then Scappus Quanis, Scappus Public Library, Scappus Senior Center, and United Way. Should go pretty quick. Okay?